The August 4th, 2025 Columbus City Council meeting would come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, a copy of this act is posted on the wall in this meeting room. Assistant City Clerk Linda, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Allercone, Barr.
Here.
Hemmer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez, Polanski.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give each of, each, give each, please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous flight Over ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening, anyone in our audience would like to talk and address any item on our agenda, we'd invite you to please come up, all of you, to please come up and state your name, your address, and speak for five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the July 21st, 2025 city council meeting. Item four B, change of date of the first meeting in September of 2025 to 6:00 PM Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, due to Labor Day. Item four C, reappointment of Timothy Mattis to the library board for a four-year term. Item four D, reappointment of Chuck Whitney as delegate to the Nebraska Cooperative Government Commission for a one-year term. Item four E, annual renewal of our computer aided dispatch and report management system maintenance, subscription, and licenses in the amount of $92,042.79 for Central Square Technologies for the Joint Communications Center. Item four F, resolution number R25-101, concurring with and authorizing the mayor to sign the National Functional Classification System Urban Area Boundary Map for the city of Columbus as established by the Nebraska Department of Transportation and associated with the 2020 United States Census. Item four G, resolution number R25-102, approving the master services agreement with Pictometry International Corporation doing business as Eagleview in the annual amount of $18,150 from 2026 through 2031 for aerial imagery, digital mapping products, and licensing for the engineering department. This is CIP number 20-06. Item four H, resolution number R25-103, continuing Columbus Platte County enhanced 911 service surcharge of $1 per month on each local exchange access line physically terminating in the 911 service area. Item four I, resolution number R25-104, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. And item four J, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council members, is there anything you would like removed from consent?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Brings us up to new business this evening.
Item 13A, authorization to sell surplus radios, pagers, and chargers from the fire department.
Mr. Mayor, move to request to sell surplus radios, pagers, and chargers be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the sale of surplus radios, pagers, and chargers from the fire department. Any comments or discussion of any, any, I mean just why and how come? I mean just surplus, I guess, huh?
Sure. As you are all aware, we transitioned to the Nebraska statewide radio system, which left us with a bunch of items that we do not or will not use any longer. So the thought process was to allow the sealed bid process to sell these to either other organizations, even agriculture, there's use in agriculture, just get rid of them as opposed to keeping them in a storage closet.
Awesome.
I assume you're going to reach out to a lot of the rural communities.
Yes. I will be 100% honest with you. I am not 100% familiar with the process for sealed bids. I'd imagine it has to go out to everyone. We did have a meeting last month, Rachel, with all the local Platte County chiefs, and we told them that this was coming up to keep an eye out for it. So that is my intent, but we will make sure that we follow the legal processes necessary to make this right.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I looked at some of the minimum amounts for the items, and they seem very high to me. Are they reasonable?
I would say they're extremely reasonable.
Good.
Most of these, you can't even purchase one of these items for this price. It was intentionally set at reasonable minimums, understanding what we're surrounded by with the intent of helping.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, authorization to move service of all city-owned wireless devices from Verizon to FirstNet.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we moved services of wireless devices from Verizon to FirstNet be approved?
Second. Have a motion and a second to move all city-owned wireless devices from Verizon to FirstNet. Any discussion?
Is service going to be through FirstNet? Has anybody been experienced?
Yeah, we've had lots of conversation and looked at lots of maps and had extensive inquiries into FirstNet about that. So we believe it's sufficient to move over if that ever changes.
I would just add to that, we have had multiple test devices in the city to include PD's computers, the fire department's done some things with it. We haven't experienced any issues with it.
All right. Is this a yearly contract with FirstNet? Is it something that if there are hiccups or issues that?
I believe this first one is a three-year term.
We can always get out of it early.
Correct.
We could if we needed to.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, quote from Confluence, in the amount of $29,130 for downtown wayfinding strategy. This is CIP number 23-01.
Confluence for downtown wayfinding strategy be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the quote from Confluence for the downtown wayfinding strategy. Any discussion?
Could we have a little explanation of what wayfinding strategy is and what, what, what are we doing? Are we putting up QR codes or what?
No, we're not.
What it is, is wayfinding signs are just signs that direct you to specific locations. It's one of the things that came out during our downtown study several years ago was that we needed wayfinding in the downtown area. One of the comments, well, one of the high comments was that people don't know where parking lots are located downtown, and so this would help direct them to that as well as other points of interest in the, in the area. With the formation of the Business Improvement District and the Creative District, both of them are very interested in developing wayfinding signs for the area, but because of the boards, there's not really that expertise on whether you need vehicular ones, pedestrian ones, whatever. So this will just create a plan for us where to put these signs, what they would look like, so that it is a cohesive look instead of the Creative District doing their own signs for what they think is important, the BID doing their own signs for what they think are important, and then if the city did, separate signs. Plus, we're hoping that through this strategy too, we can eliminate some of the poles downtown by doing some merging of signs.
So it's basically a comprehensive look at what's needed and trying to collaborate with all the different parties that are involved in trying to do different things downtown?
Correct. Because the BID wants to, excuse me, BID wants to put wayfinding signs up like on 20, 23rd and up on the highway directing people downtown, and so those have to be a different style sign than what you may find in a parking lot. I don't have that expect, expertise to be able to guide them, and nobody on the board does. So this will give us what we need, and then that way you guys can have the final say in what they're, what the design for these signs is going to look like instead of having piece build here and there, so.
And this would be half funded by Creative District grant funds we have and half funded by the city's Downtown Improvement CIP.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, yeah, what if anything are we doing to address all the empty buildings downtown? Are we, can we use some of this money to go out and invite people to come to see what downtown Columbus looks like? Would, this is a good spot for your business. Are we pushing it?
We do have a, on the Business Improvement District webpage, we do have a page specifically for buildings that are for sale or for rent. I've reached out to the realtors to get that information. They just have to get used to having that resource available. Anytime that we get calls in the city or we know, we get a call, hey, I'd like to come to town, I'd like to locate my business, what's available, I make sure that I have that list to be able to give them the information that they need depending on what they're looking for.
I think, I think the exact answer is this particular thing doesn't address it.
Will not. Sorry.
But, I'm sorry, but other things that they're doing do.
That's what I was concerned about, yeah.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to accept. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13D, quote from Holiday Outdoor Decor in the amount of $24,500 for downtown Christmas decorations using funds from the Downtown Business Improvement District budget.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Holiday Outdoor Decor for downtown Christmas decorations be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Holiday Outdoor Decor for downtown Christmas decorations. Any discussion?
The downtown Business Improvement District budget money is part of the assessment to the downtown businesses? That's where it's coming from? So when somebody jumps at me saying, where's that money going to, I can tell them it's Merry Christmas.
One of the things, yes.
I thought we had somebody that might go, oh, 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 but we didn't get it. I mean, we're talking about Christmas. I, I, I thought we might. Okay. Any other comment? Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second to accept. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13E, quote from Creative Sites LLC in the amount of $431,211 for Pawnee Park's Sotomayland Playground Equipment. This is CIP number 25-38.
Mr. Mayor, move for the quote from Creative Sites LLC for playground equipment be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Creative Sites LLC for the Pawnee Park Sotomayland Playground Equipment. Any discussion? I would ask, is there grant money that goes with this? Is there other funding that goes with it? I think it's a great example of collaboration coming together.
Yes. So this is a 50-50 grant split between the city and the Land and Water Conservation Fund. We were awarded in January, the federal government finally released the, the funds for us to be able to move ahead with purchasing.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, how many separate locations in Pawnee Park? Will the park playground equipment be, will it be spread out or is it going to be one area?
It's all in one area. It's going to be in the Sotomayland area, which is right next to the East Shelter, and it's going to be an all-accessible playground, all-inclusive accessible. So it'll be the first one in our park system that has accessible surfacing and to be completely inclusive, so.
I'm not saying it's exactly like it, but would it be similar to what Lost Creek School has on their playground area?
Very similar, yes. It'll have that port-in-place surfacing so that kids with wheelchairs and crutches or anybody that needs a little extra assistance will be able to navigate.
What will we do with the old equipment?
To be determined.
To be determined.
It's not in great shape.
Not in great shape.
It is not in great shape. We have had interest from the community of Duncan for it, so we would just have to go through the process to, to get that.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second to accept. Any, without further discussion, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13F, quote from Motoplex of Columbus in the amount of $13,000 for UTV for the park department. This is reallocated CIP number 23-12.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote. From Motoplex of Columbus for UTV be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Motoplex of Columbus for the UTV. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13G, quote from Midwest Turf and Irrigation in the amount of $34,815.30 for sand trap rake for Quail Run Golf Course. This is a requested reallocation of CIP 23-12.
Mr. Mayor, move for the quote from Midwest Turf and Irrigation for a sand trap rake be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Midwest Turf and Irrigation. Any discussion? Any discussion? Betsy, I would just mention to the council and the public that I had asked you, there was not other quotes for this piece of equipment and the next one that's on the agenda. And the answer was, this fits particular pieces of equipment we have. So, I mean, please, please explain.
Yes, this one in particular is a Sourcewell quote. So it is already sourced and meets the bid requirements. But for the next one, which is the John Deere purchase, it is, you can only buy those through John Deere, and it fits the equipment that we have, so.
All right. My mistake, this one is through Sourcewell. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13H, quote from Van Wall Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $13,667 for a fairway blower for the golf courses. This is a requested reallocation of CIP number 23-12.
Mr. Mayor, move the quote from Van Wall Equipment Incorporated for a fairway blower be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Van Wall Equipment. Any discussion?
Where are we shorting? Who, what part of the course are we shorting?
Right now, the oldest blower is being used over at Vanburg.
No, but you said you're reallocating funds. Where were those funds originally?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Those funds were originally part of the design for the memorial stadium part of the Burger Bash area. And so then, when we did not move forward with that project, that left some funds open there.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13I, discussion on the draft 2025-2026 budget.
Council members, this was brought up, it's an item, do we need to have a motion to talk about it? Or do we just talk about it? I asked for this, do we need a motion to talk about this? Okay. I asked for this to be added to the agenda as a service to the public because we continually talk about being open and transparent as we present and work through our budget. And so this is another opportunity to answer the questions for anybody that has any and even council members that might have anything they want to add because, you know, this process is, it's a fluid process. It starts in, heck, it starts in March, but gets really serious in May and then gets way serious as we get into August and September. So here's another opportunity for us, if there's a question, or for any of our public that always wants to have input. And if there is none, which is wonderful, I just want to thank you all and that's, but that was the reason behind the item on the agenda. Any comments or questions? Staff, any comments or questions?
Well, there's no attachment to the thing that the public can see.
Well, we didn't, we don't have any, we haven't had any questions, and we've already put out draft things, so what do you want?
Yeah, I mean.
You know, I understand what's going on, but someone looking at the agenda doesn't see a lot.
What would we attach?
The items that are in the budget, or at least the items that are in the discretionary budget.
Okay, we can attach that next time. The mayor has asked for it to be on the next agenda, too.
But we're not showing the public anything is what I'm concerned with.
Well, but I'm.
It was all provided at the open house, too.
And I'm concerned that the public's not here, and there's an open item on the agenda. So I can't spoon-feed them, right? I mean, the point is, they want it, it's here, they can ask for it. We want to give them, you brought up a great idea, and I had already brought that up to Tara. At least the CPI and the DCPI can be brought up and talked about. But I am not going to sit and have people tell me that they didn't have any input to anything we tried to decide when we have agenda items, we have open meetings, and we are there to answer their questions. All right. Move on to comments from mayor and city council members.
Item 13J, comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion may be held on this item.
Council members, any discussion this evening? Yes, Mr. Sillings?
That was a great program last Saturday. I don't know if the staff happened to be there, but it was outstanding.
Are you talking about the Beats and Eats?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Wasn't any place to sit on the grass.
It had to be the best crowd we had all year, Betsy, and the music was great and the weather. I mean, a great combination of everything, good music, good weather, I mean, yeah, very, very good. Kudos to the park staff and you for putting those together. I mean, that was the last one. Hard to believe, yeah. Councilman.
This started Columbus Day's week with coronation happening tonight. Just want to remind everybody that Thursday, Donnet and myself will be hosting the prayer breakfast starting at 6:30 with the program at 7:00. Tickets are $10. Love to see you all there. I think it's a great way to start the Columbus Day weekend and hope we'll see you all there. Oh, and we have a singer, too, that'll be there.
Does he know he's singing?
Yeah.
Solo. I couldn't get him to ho, ho, ho. How are you going to get him to sing?
We're buying you breakfast.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, resolution number R25-105, approving memorandum of understanding with Columbus Public Schools for student library cards.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R25-105 be adopted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-105. Any discussion?
Be a little background about how this came about.
Yeah, I'd be glad to hear that. Go ahead, Jerry. Please.
So, a lot of libraries in the country do this, and so I presented it to my leadership team, and we took it to the schools. We're going to do a pilot project with the Columbus schools, just in the elementary school, so that we can work out all the logistical matters involved. What it'll be is we'll exchange information with them on their student body, and then we will provide library cards to the school, and they will distribute them. And then the parents will get information sent home to them so that they can opt out of the program if they don't want their child to have a library card.
I think it's an awesome idea, great collaboration of partners in the community. And I had already reached out to Jerry, and well, I asked Tara, I asked staff, and then I talked to Jerry tonight. It is a trial program, but I know the Columbus Catholic school system is interested and will be, you know, be eager to hear from you as this trial program moves along.
Yeah, it is our intention to roll it out with all the other schools, too.
Yep. So, very good.
Do you have any idea how many new cards will be issued?
No, we don't, not to start with.
I would think you've taken away a lot of concern by just offering the opting out of parents. I mean, if there's those that are concerned about having a library card, they don't have to, the schools, it can be neutral that way. I mean, again, awesome, good job.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept resolution R25-105. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B, resolution number R25-106, approving billing service agreement with Digitech Computer LLC to provide EMS billing services for the Columbus Fire Department.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R25-106?
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-106. Any discussion? Seeing none?
I was just going to ask Ryan to maybe give a little background since we've spent a lot of time on it.
Yes. So in 2019, the city entered a contract with EMS billing. Shortly after that, they switched, they were bought out, sold to QMC, Quick Made Claims. We've had significant issues with just customer service and the way they do business. I don't know, definitely for as long as I've been here, probably before. So we made the decision, and God forbid, we, the selection committee met, looked over all the proposals, and we were comfortable with Digitech. I think it's just worth noting, this is the same company that's doing billing for Lincoln and Omaha Fire Department. They have told us, not only is it a 2.25% less than what we're paying now, but they see a 10% to 20% increase in net collections when people switch over. So hopefully, we're hopeful that this is going to clean up our processes and reduce workload on staff, but also increase some of our revenue as well, so.
Awesome. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve R25-106. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14C, resolution number R25-107, approving the engineering services agreement with RVW Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $10,200 for fiber optics design and construction phase services for the park and wastewater utility department maintenance complex. This is reallocation of CIP 25-32.
Somebody's got this.
Move that resolution number R25-107 be adopted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-107. Any discussion?
Once again, were we taking the funds from same spot?
Yeah, no, not the same spots as Betsy's, but we had funds allocated for the Loop River Bridge NDOT project. And once it was negotiated with the NDOT, there's no payment in this current fiscal year, so we used some of those funds to, A, purchase that building, and this is a continuation of that same CIP.
Thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, opposed nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.